I'm Jim Reed, the facilitator for today's workshop. This is the first of three or four workshops. The council, the mayor, the department directors are working to improve communication, teamwork, collaboration. So today's specific goals are they are trying to take the opportunity to get to know each other better as both individual members of the community and as public servants. And we're identifying common values and common interests as a way to build on the commonalities between them for the future so that they can improve teamwork and collaboration and communication.
We just have one person missing at the start of the meeting, and that's Rob Cave. He has a doctor, had a longstanding doctor's appointment, and he said that he would be here by now and he apologized. He's a little late. Nobody ever wants to sit by the facilitator.
Well, we moved.
Yeah, I got box office.
Whenever we see this, we'll see the back of your head very often.
By the way, though, I've asked you to move over here halfway through the meeting. So all of the people who are hiding.
No, I sit by the food first thing.
Maybe the first thing to say this morning is just that we will be done at 11:30. I know some of you need to race out of here for other commitments, so I promise you we will be done on time. So I want to first give you for you the agenda, our goals for today, the ground goals. So let me just start, though, by offering three thank yous. First of all, I do want to thank you for hiring me to assist you. I consider it a privilege to work with elected officials. And having been a former director of a department at King County, I also really enjoy working with folks like your department directors. So both working with elected and appointed officials is one of my passions in life, and I'm really grateful to you for hiring me. And I realize, too, that this is using taxpayer funds for my services. And so one of my commitments to you is that I want to make sure this process is efficient and productive, meaningful, constructive, so that when we're done, you can say to yourselves and to the public that this was a wise investment. And the thanks, second thing I want to offer is I really appreciate each one of you taking your time to meet with me. And I really appreciate the fact that you all spent at least an hour with me. I ended up interviewing eighteen of you, including Stephen Clifton before he left, for a total of 21.5 hours. So the fact that you would take that time to talk with me is very special to me, and I'm really appreciative because it's helping me to begin to understand the issues and challenges facing you, both substantive and interpersonal. And without those kinds of interviews, I wouldn't have been able to get this kind of start. And then just related to that, the third thank you I wanted to offer is I really do appreciate your candor and your kind of comprehensive perspectives during those interviews. Like I just said, averaged more than an hour with each one of you. And, you know, you don't really even know me that well. You certainly didn't know me when we started to talk in these interviews. So the fact that you would be honest with me really was an honor, and I just, again, want to thank you. So I'm really delighted to be here today, and I'm hoping that this very first meeting, as well as the entire process, is really meaningful and productive for all of you. So let me just walk you through the agenda, kind of explain to you how we're going to proceed today. If you remember on the first afternoon of your two-day retreat last March, or just a month ago, on March 14th, I came to you and I listened to you for a while, and then I observed that I think there are three teams that we need to focus on in this process. And my interviews confirm that. So you told me that there is work to be done to improve trust, communications, and collaboration between the seven members of the city council. You also told me that there's the need to strengthen trust, communications, and collaboration between the eight of you sitting at this table who are elected officials, so the council plus the mayor. And I heard from all of you that a third team that needs to come together through deeper trust and improved communications and greater cooperation is the team that all of you are part of, the council, the mayor, and the department directors. So the process I am proposing to you, the process that I actually proposed to you in the proposal that you accepted when you hired me, that process is all geared toward helping to strengthen all three teams. And sometimes, like today, we'll work together to strengthen this large team, but I do have some ideas in mind, some of which you gave me, for focusing specifically on the council or focusing specifically on the eight elected officials. We can talk a little bit more about that toward the end of the day, but I just want you to know that I see this as a balanced process that maybe even starts with the council, expands to including Dave, and includes the directors, too. And then just specifically looking at the agenda today, also during the interviews, I got the impression that you could know each other a little bit better. And so I heard, for example, that this is a young council. None of you on the council have been here all that long. Dave hasn't been mayor all that long, although you were on the city council previously. And most of the directors are fairly new, including two brand-new ones in Shane and Scott. So it is a young team, and it seems to me that it would be helpful to get to know each other better. We're going to start doing that in the introductions of you that we'll embark on in just a minute. And then another way I think we can achieve that is through section two, or that is the section on introductions, but then also section three, where I've asked you to be prepared to articulate four to seven values. And these are the fundamental principles that define who you are, and more importantly, what you want the community to see about you as a public servant or as a leader. And if you look at the agenda of session three, after you've had the opportunity to present your values, there'll be a little time for some follow-up discussion where I'm hoping you can talk about, well, what are the commonalities that you just heard in terms of values? And I don't think we need to come up with what were the top five values of the entire team, because you're all unique individuals, and I kind of don't want to do that, which might seem a little bit too packaged or too artificial. But I still bet, having had that privilege of interviewing you, that you'll hear some commonalities. And then if you look at session four, we'll take some time to talk about your individual interests in serving the city and its people, and then your individual interest in this process. And then again, we'll have a little time to talk about, well, what are some of the common interests that you share in terms of serving the public or in terms of the outcomes you want for this process? And can I just say this, that I think one of my strengths is I mediate conflicts, public policy, workplace, and I teach it at the University of Washington. And I always say that the best way to resolve disputes is through interest-based negotiations. So if this process even stopped today at 11:30 and never resumed, I would say that the greatest triumph you've had is that you've put your interests on the table, you've talked about what they mean to you, and then you also looked at what are your common interests. So for me, this is an incredibly important exercise, and I do believe that it will benefit all of you. Maybe not immediately today, this afternoon, but over time. I think it'll always be something you can go back to, thinking about, I remember what Strom articulated as his interests. I remember what Laura said were her interests. I remember what Scott said were his. How do mine align with that? Or if we have some different interests, can we still sit down and talk about, well, where is the commonality? So I do think it's a tool that you'll be able to take away and use in the future. So that's my opening, my review of the goals and the agenda for today. And again, I just want to ask you, does this sound like a good way to go today? Would you offer any changes to this or any suggestions?
I don't think you're going to meet the time limit, but...
Oh, you haven't seen me in action. We're on time right now. Okay, any other questions at all?
On the ground rules, are you going to mention anything more specific than what you said so far?
I was just going to walk you through the ground rules, make sure you're okay with them. I mean, you have had them a few days, so I wasn't trying to walk through them one by one. But I built these on having listened and learned from you. I also did appreciate your code of conduct. I thought that was excellent. And then Dave shared something with me that also talked a little bit about rules of behavior and engagement. So these are built on that. They go a little bit further, but for this process today, it seems to me that, you know, the highlights are really, I hope you all feel equally responsible for this process. I do think, maybe I shouldn't have used the word conflict, but I do think disagreement might come out, maybe not so much today, but in the future. But that's okay. It can really be a constructive creative force if we keep it focused on issues, not on personalities. Number three really is something that I feel like I picked up from the culture of the group. I feel that it's important to really assume the best intentions of each other. If you find that you're making an assumption, if I'm sitting here and thinking, I'm listening to Carrie, and I'm thinking, I'm making an assumption about why she, in charge of parks, is making this decision or making this proposal, you know, if I'm assuming something, I ought to ask about it, because it gives her the opportunity to say, Jim, you're right, or Jim, you're wrong, and that may give you my motivation or why I'm making this proposal. I don't know that today we need to make any decisions at all, so the idea of making them by consensus may not be relevant today, but they will, it will be relevant in the future. So I don't want a vote of four to three, or five to three if you brought in Davis. This process is not your formal process. It's really more like, let's make, so for example, in the next workshop, I'm very much thinking about expanding on these, having you define some ground rules for working together. I don't want a vote taken and have it turn out to be like a love of the age or something. It's got to be consensus. And then the other ones are just, you know, speak clearly. I kind of put six in to be a little humorous. If you're sitting in the meeting and you're asking yourself, Carrie, like, who's doing the most talking? And if the answer is me, hold back and let others catch up. And I do need seven sincerely, that if something about the agenda, maybe it's the question on the agenda, or the facilitation techniques are not working for you, raise your hand, say so. I think one of my strengths is flexibility, we can find a different way. Or if I'm doing something that's bothering you, and you don't know that you want to say that in front of everyone, we always have breaks, and so you can always saddle up to me and say, Jim, there's something you're doing, and maybe you could assume I didn't mean to do it intentionally. But I do want to be corrected if I'm doing something that's interfering with your process. So I guess I would just ask, does anybody else have other ground rules?
I just have a comment about item four, about voting, just because voting is so inherent in what we do. So, and I understand that these are the ground rules for now, but you did make a comment about, you know, adopting these kind of for our future. And in the future, when we vote, we have to remember that if, you know, if I'm in the three group and someone else is in the four group, that I didn't lose. Because if we look at it as being loss, then, you know, we're going to take, carry that with us. And so, you know, you have to look at it, well, my ideas aren't at the forefront yet, you know. So at some point in time, my ideas may be at the forefront. And, you know, that's part of the elective process or democratic process, is that somebody's, you know, the city has to move forward, and we've been the chosen ones to decide how that's going to happen. And, you know, if I'm in the three group, the two group, or the one group, then I don't, I can't look at that as a loss, because if I do, it'll, you know, it's too much of a burden to carry forward.
Tom, are you suggesting any change to this one?
Well, I think for today's work, this is a good ground rule. For future work, what we have to do is get past winners and losers, because if we don't get past winners or losers, we're going to carry it.
I think the words collaboration and consensus are important, but the fact is, if we can get our mental state to the point that we argue an issue, take a vote, four, three, five, two, seven, oh, we then go on to the next issue. We can't mix that personal feelings that you might have towards a person, and I know that's going to be part of your goal. That's the way government, in my opinion, functions the best. Hear the presentation, argue the point, and take the vote, and then we move on.
And I think we're getting a little bit beyond this process, but let me just say that I feel that I did hear from some people that some voices don't feel like they are being heard, and some people don't feel as if they have as much power as others. And so I think that's a little bit of why it's hard sometimes to say, okay, there was a vote, let's not move on. But we, these are things we will address in the future, I promise you. So are you all okay for these ground rules for this particular meeting then? Okay, good. Okay, the first thing we're going to do is have you introduce your colleagues to the full group. You all have an agenda with a different color, and I'm going to have you go into small groups with other people with the same color agenda. So each group is going to consist of three people, and I'm asking that each person in the group is interviewed by the other two. Ask the three questions that are on the agenda, what is your name, rank, and serial number? So in other words, you can provide whatever context in terms of your profession, your community experience, any biographical details. And then what is one experience in your life that's brought you to this place, serving the people of Edmonds as an elective or a point official? And the third question is, what would you like most to be remembered for? So I'm going to only give you 15 minutes for the three of you to be in the same group and to do this. And then when we come back, I'm going to have you introduce each other. So you can go anywhere, the kitchen, over here in the corner, wherever. Just feedback.
Really amazing.
Feedback at 9:05.
Sorry, I went to Silver Springs, Maryland, and to the National Labor College. Took some certification there on negotiations.
Kind of a nice team, because it's got a council member and the oldest, or I should say, longest-serving member of this group in, and the shortest-term member. So with that, Diane and Al and Scott James, I'll try to go first.
Okay, I'll talk about Chief Pompam. He grew up in South Seattle. He would come up here with his dad to the Edmonds Theater, and I won't tell you what shows he used to watch, but I don't even know that some of them...
It was G-rated.
Of course, they were G-rated, but we're talking way before my time, like Coonies or anything like that, which I grew up on. But there was a steamboat, which I didn't know about, that...
Steam ferry.
Steam ferry. But he grew up basically in Rainier Valley. He is a Husky. He went to the University of Washington. In fact, I own two Huskies.
I highly recommend it.
And about the time that he came to Edmonds was he was basically looking for a job. Back then, it was around the Vietnam War. He would go for testing. There'd be like 800-plus people looking to become a cop. So basically, what happened is he got hired in Edmonds. Rather than go to the academy, it was boots on the ground, so he got a gun, got his ticket, thingamajig, ticket book, and his badge.
And raised our revenue, Diane.
And his badge, and he was on the street. So after 35 years, he still says the city has been very good to him. He enjoys being the chief. And what he would like to most be remembered as, it sounds very endearing, but he is very honest, he's very ethical, and he is extremely accountable, he feels very accountable to the city of Edmonds and the citizens because they have been good to him.
Thank you, Diane. So I will introduce the youngest member of our director's team, and that is Scott James. Scott is our finance director, was born in Alaska, but has lived most of his life in Edmonds. He has raised his family here. Scott said back in the day, Edmonds was a great spot to bring dates. And we tried to inquire a little bit more about that, but Scott was not too forthcoming with information. He says, we're really running short on time.
I can't wait till we have the rest of the...
I do have more, which I'll share off. Scott graduated from U-Dub, as did his wife. His oldest daughter is attending U-Dub as well, and their younger daughter is in high school, and she also wants to attend the U-Dub, so that's, that's a good thing. Scott, in his early career in finance, worked at Marstir. He ended up enrolling one of his daughters over at a business here called Main Street Kids, got a little bit more familiar with city government operations just down the street, and realized that there was an account position that had opened up here. Scott competed with eighty applicants, missed for the back in the eighties. And he got the job, worked here for seven years, realized that if his career was going to progress, he probably needed to move on to another city, a smaller city, where he could get a finance director's job. So he did get such a job over at the city of Sunnyside in 2005. Worked there for just under two years, and then got hired by the city of McElteo as finance director. Worked there for seven years, and just within the last month, Scott came to work here for the city buildings, came back to his home. Scott would like to be remembered for some of these same words I mentioned, and I think they're absolutely applicable to somebody in finance as well. Being honest, ethical, and also leaving the city in good financial shape at such time when Scott moves on. He says he's not leaving right away, Mayor. He wants to leave it in even better shape than it was when he came here. So I present to you Mr. Scott James.
Well, thank you. Why, I have the honor of introducing Diane Bachos. Diane grew up in Fulton, Oregon, and as she was nearing her college years, there was a US Bank scholarship that she was able to get, and it eventually drew her to banking. And she did go to US Bank, and she had worked for, in the auditing department, and grew up in the banking and became a regulator with US Bank. For a stint at US Bank lasted about 10 years. And what that did is it opened up doors for her to go over to Lithuania. Lithuania had some issues with their banking system, and Diane's experiences at US Bank was like a perfect fit. So she was able to be very, very helpful for them and restructured their entire banking system, so it's remarkable.
Not just me, or a lot of people.
So she did live there for actually two years. After being in Lithuania for a couple of years, she went on to Kazakhstan. And then after Kazakhstan, she went to weather manufacturing, was kind of like, weather manufacturing, is that making rain, sun? No, it's actually what they, they actually made devices. At the company, she was appropriate manager, and these devices were made for pilots, so that way they can see weather patterns as they're approaching their various landing fields. She retired from there here in Edmonton. And after being here for a short period of time, she found that there were a lot of interesting clubs, joints, service clubs, and so she, she joined several clubs in town. And shortly after that, a lot of us remember the WAMU implosion that blew up, and it, it kind of raised her eyebrows just to look a bit about the politics. And it kind of, there was an opening on council, someone had stepped down, and so she threw her name in the hat, and she was selected as to serve on council, and she's still here six years later.
Strom was selected, then I was elected. Strom was selected, then I was appointed.
Oh, yeah, you were appointed, yeah, appointed, yeah. So Diane likes to be remembered for, there's a buzzword here, honesty. We kind of all felt that that was a really, one of our strong points, is we really believe honesty is really important. She also wants to be remembered as a leader, and she also wants to be remembered for rising level of financial transparency. And lastly, she liked to also be remembered for being a part of the March Restoration and being instrumental in that, so I...
Thank you.
Thank you all. What team wants to go next?
I'd be honored to introduce my boss, the mayor. Dave has a background in...
No pressure.
No pressure at all. I break quite a lot. Music education at WSU. That whole underlying Cougar Huskies thing is something we ought to talk about. And then went to Eastern Washington University, so he followed the same two schools I did and got his advanced degree there in music education. Spent 11 years teaching at Shoreline Community College Music. Bought a real estate company, owned that for 11 years. I know that was a big part of his life. Became involved in local politics starting about 1992 in a run for city council. Also ran for county executive in 2004. That one was not a successful campaign. And then joined a think, a Cascadia Center, worked on transportation issues for a couple of years, approximately 2007 to 2009. Was appointed by the governor to serve on the growth management hearings board, which he did for five years, and then resigned that appointment to run for mayor here. He's married, three kids, and all grown, has served on a variety of organizations and committees, the Public Facilities District, the Public School Foundation, Senior Services Group, Cascade Symphony Board. One experience he would like most to be remembered for was, or the one experience, excuse me, that shaped his career in coming to Edmonds and the current position he occupies was just a lot of things that existed in the underlying dynamics in the previous administration here that he thought maybe he could be helpful in improving on. That was the challenge that he embraced when he ran for mayor. And the one thing he'd like to be remembered for, I like this, being a good person. That would be something we could all identify with.
I would just correct one thing. I owned a real estate company for 24 years, I'm older than you imply.
That was the 11-year thing.
I'd like to introduce Laura Petzel. Laura is a graduate of Whitman University and the University of Washington Law School. She started a career in law with a large, and it was a large, law firm in Seattle. The principal charge, although she attests that she was not part of the principal charge, was handling the Whoops situation back a long time ago, but she had no part. She stepped back from the practice of law to start a family. She has, she's married and has three children, one is a stepchild. She currently works with her husband in a home business. Do you have a license?
And boy, are we annoyed every time we pass.
We are, we're targeting the South End next year.
Going door to door. Your business at this place?
The business that she and her husband are in are actuarial, accounting, consulting, outside interests. She's helped with the chess club for 26 years, and she contends she's learned a great deal from many children that she's worked with over that time. Entering politics, she began as a citizen activist. She characterized it as a mayor put an alternative school in her neighborhood. You figure out the timelines of it. But because of that, became active in the community at large with her concern of that alternative school being located in her neighborhood. The activism led to coming to the council in 1999, and she has been a council member, I guess, off and on during that period of time. She would like to be remembered for Hickman Park.
Okay, my turn. So I'm in a group of two creakers.
Yeah.
I get to introduce our public works director, Phil Williams. And he characterized himself as a somewhat indifferent student until being inspired by his biology teacher, wound up with a bachelor's in wildlife biology from Washington State, and then a master's from Eastern Washington in aquatic ecology and water quality. He worked for, initially, I think, first one here I've got is the Department of Ecology enforcing environmental regulations, and then worked for Kaiser Aluminum, a private company, for five years, trying to comply with the environmental regulations that he used to enforce. He hooked up with the city of Spokane as the director of environmental programs, and then was promoted into a solid waste project, program in the middle of a substantial, large project, and more or less had to take over that project and see it through to conclusion. The project had started as a popular project, but apparently became unpopular, which Phil credits his thick skin for that experience, for creating a somewhat thicker skin. Then he became public works director at Spokane. He left when the politics changed, worked for CH2M Hill for five years, but wanted back into public service. Got back into public service with Bremerton, and then the politics changed, and he eventually found his way here. He's married with two kids, three grandkids, and I will be...
Not married, not that that's a big deal.
Oh, was married, two kids, three grandkids, sorry. And I will be remiss if I did not mention... And I will be remiss if I did not mention, I did, the mayor mentioned my kids, but I also have two grandkids and another on the way. And they do live locally. And yes, I spend at least three afternoons a week there, including this afternoon. So if you can't reach me, it's a bit busy. And Phil would like to be remembered for being fair and for being team member. And he is also concerned with and how his employees see him. And he wants to, likes to work to make sure that he's seen to be a loyal member of the team. That's it for our group, I think.
Thank you, Laura.
Jim, I'll go next.
Okay.
Is that okay if we do, I'll introduce Joan. We didn't decide who was going to introduce who, but I was in a group with Strom and Joan and we had a great, we had a great conversation. Joan is married to the same man for thirty years. And she celebrates that and is almost, would call him her sole name. She has two kids, a twenty-seven-year-old son and a twenty-three-year-old daughter. They homeschool their kids growing up and her kids are both now independent and have their own professions and are employed and they're very proud of their kids. She has her, she's lived in Edmonds since nineteen eighty-five. She moved up here from California. She did study at the UC Berkeley and got her a master's in social work. And she has a business in town. She is a care consultant and helps elders and caretakers and disabled to put together plans to, so they make sure they have the care that they need. She has two different last names that she uses separately, one for city council and her political work and one for her business in town. And she finds that very helpful to be able to separate those two as she does her business. The experience which brought her to Edmonds in the political arena is there in two thousand and six, there was a wetland near her home and a backhoe came in and knocked down a bunch of trees and made some, had some impact in the community and that inspired her to get involved. I think we all know that situation and she's brought it up and talked about it quite a bit with us today. And it really is a point of passion for her, is that fair to say? And then what she would like to be remembered for in Edmonds is helping to create a destination waterfront and having the waterfront connect to all of our communities through transportation, but really creating that destination feel for our waterfront network.
So I'll introduce Strom. Strom Peterson, no other names. He was born and raised in New Mexico. Decided to, with his wife Maria Montalvo, move to the Northwest, loves the Northwest, traded the beauty of the water and mountains for open skies in Mexico. He's married to Maria Montalvo for twenty years, this October. He could not imagine any other partner. They have no kids, but they do have a dog. And they have a goddaughter who is in a poetry reading contest. She's in a bilingual school and she's six years old and she's doing a poetry reading in Spanish. And that's happening soon.
As we speak.
As we speak. They moved to Edmonds in two thousand and one, related to a job transfer opportunity. And they explored the area and landed on Edmonds because they found just lovely things to do here, beautiful setting. He opened a business, Allez, and then The Cheesemonger and now The Cheesemonger's Table. And he got involved in politics because his grandfather was a county commissioner. And he said, he referenced green fire engines. And that was his inspiration for getting involved in politics. His grandfather, as the county commissioner, was able to get lime green instrumental in getting lime green fire engines.
Wow, cool.
For the city that he grew up in. And also the dialogue at home with his parents was often about politics, getting involved in politics. And politics around the dinner table were an honored profession. So he's always seen that as something that he wanted to go into. Strom wants to be known for environmental issues. Ultimately, he would like to be known for helping to clean up Puget Sound. He liked to be looked at as, you know, not, not the fancy stuff, but really getting into the nitty-gritty about stormwater and how to clean the sound. And he's still very proud of the positive that he has.
Thank you. Yeah, green fire engines were the thing for a couple of years. They thought they were more visible.
But that was inspiring.
That's right.
So Carrie was in our group as well. So Carrie Hike moved to Edmonds in nineteen seventy-eight as a kid with her mom and two siblings, I believe.
Yeah.
Single mom, so she grew up here. And mom still lives here, which is one of the reasons she was excited about the opportunity to come back to Edmonds and work. She went to Western Washington University.
Go Vikings?
I know Vikings too well, but you're like...
And got her undergraduate, graduate degree in Parks and Rec, which took her to Toquilla with her first job where she worked a lot with at-risk kids. And found that very fulfilling, but still felt that she couldn't, being kind of a person of privilege, just couldn't feel that she was, could give it her all. So she then went and got your master's in social work.
Yep.
With an emphasis on public administration, she found as she was getting her master's in social work at U-David, that she found the public administration aspect to be really interesting, how could you marry the two? So from there, she then went back into the nonprofit world and worked for different nonprofits, again with a primary focus on at-risk kids and kids of color. But was still struggling to really make, how does she really encompass everything? And that inspired her to apply to the Peace Corps. She was accepted in, for two years to Ecuador. And was really able to delve into a whole new country and get a better understanding of what it would be to kind of be an outsider in a, in a foreign land, literally, a foreign land. From there, she went to the Marshall Islands. She got hired by the U.S. Government to start a program in the Marshall Islands to send kids at the university or college of the Marshall Islands. So kids could go to school there. They would then go to the U.S. for a couple of years to college, usually in some sort of environmental work, to then be able to come back to the Marshall Islands and use that knowledge to help clean up the island and work on the fisheries and, which is, just sounded... Yeah, fantastic. But from there, then her father passed away, so she moved back to the States. And she landed in Kirkland and was, as we know, the deputy director of community services. And again, really got back to working with her Parks and Rec hat on and her social work hat on to really engage kids in the community and really do figure out ways where Parks and Rec can really impact kids. So that was her primary focus there. And she started the East Side Social Sustainability Project, which I'm going to do more research on because that just sounds awesome. And then, so here she is, landed in Edmonds, again with a real focus on environmental issues and how parks can just kind of affect the whole community, both from an environmental standpoint, families. And she would most like to be remembered for making a difference in social justice. And she has a good, next step with that, with her daughter, who just, eleven-year-old daughter, who was just accepted to Lake Washington School for Girls.
Yes.
Which is a school that focuses on social justice.
Wow.
Read about Cesar Chavez and also, she's setting us all up for a good next generation, so thank you for...
Thank you. Next one, go. You do it.
Yeah, I'll talk about, introduce Christina Johnson. She graduated, she has multiple degrees, but graduated from Rutgers. She's been a transportation planner. She's got some political science background in her education. She has lived in Edmonds most of her life. I think you were born and raised in Seattle, or till you were five, right? Something like that.
I moved to Seattle, moved to Mount like Paris for two years.
That's right.
Moved to Edmonds when I was two.
Moved to Edmonds and she's lived, her parents have lived in the same house since nineteen fifty-three.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four. And the lot has been subdivided. She actually had a horse on the lot in Edmonds, not far from Yewes Park. And it's been subdivided and now she's built a house on that lot behind her parents' house. They're on the same lot as her parents have lived on. She said, one of the things that's brought her to here is that she's served, as many of you know, on the Transportation Committee and on the Planning Board. And there were some issues on the Planning Board regarding Key Bank and some things that council might have done around there that got her to be engaged in maybe trying to help make a difference by being elected to the city council. She liked to be remembered for her decisions being very thoughtful, having all the information out in front of her before she makes a decision. And she likes to think that she's got an interest in representing all of Edmonds in all the various parts of Edmonds.
Okay. I'll introduce you to Jeffrey Burton Paraday. Burton was the name of his grandfather, who was also a lawyer and probably influenced him a great deal. Jeff has two children. Presently lives near Seward Park and has recently taken up running. He's a graduate of Seattle University Law School. And a couple of interesting things about Jeff is that when he was a kid, he went with his parents to Nepal. And that's sort of his dream trip is to return to Nepal with his children. And Jeff had a very interesting job. He was an au pair in Paris.
Wow.
Taking care of two children while he went to school. And he got room and board in exchange for, caring for them for a couple of hours a day. And so is semi-fluid in French, if you care to speak some of that. We didn't go into a lot of the other questions, like what he wants to be remembered for or what single experience in life brought him to Edmonds. But I thought we explored, you know, more of the personal side and I found that very interesting.
Do you want to say what you'd like to be remembered for?
Well, I guess professionally, I'd like to be remembered for being a force for good governance. Personally, I'd like to be remembered for being a good father, so. I'm going to introduce you to Adrian Frady Manillas. She is, she has been working since, basically, she graduated from high school and had to put herself through school while she was working full-time. She studied special education. She thought she was wanting to be a special education teacher at one point. And she actually did teach for a semester and then decided that that was not a path she wanted to go down after all. Switched gears, remained active in the labor movement for a long time, or at least professionally involved in the labor movement. She has met four presidents. And one of those experiences was instrumental, I think, in her becoming involved in politics. She went to Washington, D.C. to meet with President Ronald Reagan to discuss his appointment of, I'm trying to remember Mr. Bork's first name.
Robert Bork.
Robert Bork. President Reagan's appointment of Robert Bork to the Supreme Court. And to express her concerns about that appointment, in particular, vis-à-vis the women's movement. And she's, that's a movement that she's been, cared a lot about and has been very active in for some time. She's also been involved, going back several years now, in Jim McDermott's governor's campaign. That was another one of her early experiences in politics. And so those are some of the things that led her to become active in politics. As far as personally, she sort of describes herself as having nine lives because she seems to have had some very unfortunate luck in the health realm. She's, I'm not going to go into all of the details, but she's suffered from a number of pretty life-threatening situations and she's battled each one of them back, so. As far as what she'd like to be remembered for, she would like to be remembered for shining a light upon all of Edmonds. And by that, she, I think, would mean in particular, some of the neighborhoods or areas of the city that maybe don't get as much attention outside of the bowl areas.
Thank you. Do we have one team left?
We could go. I think that would be a good option.
Do we have a choice?
No. No, we always have a choice.
So I have the pleasure of introducing Shane Hope, who's been here since April Fool's Day. I remember that. Shane comes to us from the city of Mount Lake Terrace, where she was there for twelve years as the same position of Development Services. She made a lot of progress there. And I remember from the interview process that she explained that she did a lot of good work there and they made a lot of progress, that she was really looking for kind of a new challenge and kind of a new, kind of change of pace. And I think that she's finding that here in the city of Edmonds. I think we're all very grateful to have her here. She has a vast and diverse professional experience. She's worked for the state of Washington for, under a little thing we might all know as the Growth Management Program. Lots of experience there. She was the governor's policy coordinator for the Columbia River Gorge. Lots of experience working with state agencies on various issues, including community revitalization. She went back to school for a master's degree in urban planning and design. Her married life took her overseas to Germany, where she lived for a year and a half. She speaks fluent German and looks for lots of opportunities to speak German to everyone. I'm lying about that. She has two sons and grandchildren. And she shared that one experience in her life that brought her to this place was her experience in Mount Lake Terrace that kind of set her up to transition to the city of Edmonds. One of the things that she would like to be remembered for is essentially helping to make good things happen. I think she's done that everywhere she's been.
And I'll, I'll go next and I'll introduce Scott. So Scott was born in Southern California, but then he saw the light and his family moved to the north. He began his public service career really in Shoreline, and I'm going to go back to that in a minute. But his education was at the University of Washington. And he majored in East Asian Studies. And I believe he had a master's in East Asian Studies as well. So his career path initially was around academia and being involved in academics and teaching. And after some foray into that, decided that was not the path he wanted to take. He did have a little divergence in that he's a certified scuba diver. And so I'm sure he came to Edmonds because of the mark that we have right down the street here. But then realized he probably couldn't make a good living doing that. And so through his father-in-law, who many of you probably... And so through his father-in-law, who many of you probably know, he did get involved in the state legislature. And worked in the state legislature for several years as a legislative assistant. Unfortunately, he realized that, you know, for two months out of the year, he had to be in Olympia, one year, and then three months out of the year, he had to be in Olympia. And so that didn't create for a good family life. He is married with four boys, who probably keep him very busy when he's not busy with the city. So decided that probably what he should do is then really take the experience that he had gained in the legislature and apply for a position that was open in Shoreline. And was the Assistant City Clerk to begin with, is that right? And then became the City Clerk there and served in that capacity until he retired at Edmonds, six months ago. When he described his career and what he did and then moving from this whole idea of being a professor in East Asian Studies to really becoming a public servant. You know, one of the things, he didn't really use these words, but the words I heard was he loved connecting people. And he loved the social service side of being involved in the legislature. And then the same thing here with city government. So connecting people and I heard him describe being very solution-oriented. So what, you know, what can we do to resolve this? And so I thought that was a really good focus that he did have. And he loves living locally and living and working here in Edmonds and being a part of that. You know, what one experience led him to being a servant here in the Edmonds area was working in the legislature. And what he would like to be remembered for is integrity, excellence, and helping to make Edmonds a quality place.
Well, Tom Masaros is Connecticut native, where he grew up and had a lot of experiences. Then went to college in St. Paul and also a year at law school, St. Paul, while he was working, put himself through. And then he went west as a young man, thanks to the draft. Brought him to California where he signed up for being a linguist, learned Czech. Had some interesting experiences, security, that kind of issue, those kinds of issues, listening in on Czech conversations. That'd be a challenge for me, I'll tell you. And then went, married a Northwest woman, came then to Seattle. He's actually been married for thirty-two years, has three children, ages mid twenties to thirty. And anyway, went to Seattle, worked for the Voice Council of America, was there for about seven and a half years. Worked with, particularly with South Seattle area troops. And really loved the challenge of that, loved the Northwest, wanted to stay. Then went to work for Providence. And he was part of the senior management team there. And part of the team that helped them really gain in their fundraising. He was on the fundraising team and led a lot of that, so that they really became effective and grew and so on. But he was always interested in political science, in fact, that was what his original college degree was about. And so he stayed interested in that. But he went after ten years at Providence here in the Northwest, went back to Massachusetts with the Sisters of Providence. And worked there also in senior management fundraising. And eventually joined the Alfred Group and worked for that group. Became the CEO by 2003 and then was the prime owner or majority owner by 2006. And so he's continued with that, but is now transitioning out the other way. And no longer an owner, but working there. And he actually plans to retire sometime in 2016 and continue living in Edmonds, where he's been since 1990. He wants to be known for, remembered for helping with positive change in Edmonds. And also his experience that's helped lead him here was really his college experience, wanting to be in political science, wanting to make a difference in the democratic process. So that's led him to being in Edmonds and serving the city.
Thank you, everybody. As I had mentioned before, Rob was coming a little bit late because of a long-standing doctor's appointment. So I gave him the agenda and I'm going to let you introduce yourself along the lines of these three questions, if you would please. And then I'm going to ask if you want to take a quick break because you're doing such great listening.
So I'll introduce me. So my, let's see, I guess one place I could start. I was born in Hawaii, so I share something with our president in that I was born or there before it was, well, I was born there before it was a state. Which sends me backwards, but, so I have questionable citizenship. I keep that quiet. So I think I can do this in order. I lived in Hawaii, California, Ohio, Washington DC, Connecticut, Oregon, Chicago, upstate New York, Florida, and finally here. So the lengthiest times were Connecticut, mostly where I grew up.
Were you on the run?
This was. It was Glastonbury, Manchester. Yep. And the other place, longest period of time was here. Everything else was sort of here and there. My father was in the Navy, which explains the first few moves. He was a Navy flyboy, navigator. He met my mother and they were both in sort of mapping and intelligence in DC for a while, which explains that. But that also explains my exposure to planning because he was a planner. And it also partially explains my interest in maps and so forth because they were in mapping, intelligence and that sort of thing. And I can remember as a kid, I used to, my father also taught night school for a college in Connecticut. And I used to take his geography tests as a little kid. And I would do better than eighty percent of his students. He said. But, so obviously I had an interest that way. And when I got out of college at Northwestern, wasn't quite sure what I wanted to do, took a year off, decided, you know, this planning thing might be okay. So went to graduate school at Cornell, met my wife there. We were married thirty-one years till she died a couple of years ago. Anyway, I do have two colleagues at home, which keep me extremely busy on a schedule. I guess my, my strongest interest in what I'd be interested in being remembered for. Got a very strong interest in both history and futurism. And I see the two as related. And would like to be remembered for integrity, innovation, and, you know, being part of a supportive decision process.
We're running a little bit behind, but don't you worry about that. I have my job to manage the time. But do you want to take a couple minute break just because you've been listening for so long? So how about? Again, thank you so much for the listening that you're doing and for the great job you did of interviewing one another. And we're moving on to talk about our individual and mutual interests. I guess I'll ask, as you present your interests, if you could do this like even in sixty to ninety seconds, just kind of like listen, maybe say very briefly what they need to you. And one of the things any facilitator loves is when people step forward to volunteer. And I've had two volunteers about this one, so I'm just going to go with, first volunteer was Tom, the second was Joan, so we'll start with them. And then maybe for the third person, we'll look for one of the directors and we'll go back and forth that way. So Tom?
And we're just doing values to begin with.
Right.
Okay. So I wrote down four that were important to me and they're ones that I've really learned over my career that are just really crucial, whatever you're involved in a group dynamic. And the first one is respect. So it's really important to be respectful of one another and especially for me, it's important that I be respected and then that I return that respect. And I need to return that respect whether someone else is giving it to me or not. And so that's an important value. And even though you disagree, you can disagree respectfully. And that's a key thing. The second one is one that I've really fostered in our firm, in the Alfred Group where I am, and it's joyfulness. So I like having a good time. I don't like being around brouches. And so, you know, how can we be joyful? And how can we really get along in a joyful manner? Even, and if you're respectful, then it's easier to do that. And to be able to poke fun in a respectful way and to be able to laugh at ourselves. So if you can laugh at yourself, it's so much easier to laugh with others. And if we can be joyful and have that kind of an atmosphere of camaraderie and moving forward and interacting. One of the most interesting times of my life was getting drafted. And I certainly did not want to be in the Army. And, but yet we learned how to have a joyful experience during a time of difficulty. And I find this so much better, being in this atmosphere than being in the Army. We should be able to have a joyful experience here as well. The next thing is trustworthy. And the value of being trustworthy is, and I think I learned that in the military. That was one of the great things for the very, you rely on one another. And you know that the other person is going to take care of you and they're going to have your back. And that you don't have to check on them because you trust that they're going to be able to do it. Probably the chief is in a situation where, you know, officers are relying on one another. And they don't have to, you know, worry about the fact that this other officer isn't going to do their job. They trust that other officer to do their job. And, you know, if there's a life and death situation, probably our firefighters find themselves in the same situation. So we should be able to do the same thing, that we trust each other. And we know that Shane's going to do her job, I know Scott's going to do his job. And then if we, if there's something we have to question, we don't question it in a sense of distrust, we question it in a sense of trust. And we put that together, especially when you think about respect and joyfulness. And then probably for Edmonds, this is a real challenge for us, is diversity. And if we value diversity, because we're not a very diverse community. You know, you just look around this table and there's not a lot of diversity in terms of ethnicity anyway, or race, I should say that. There's probably a lot of diversity in ethnicity, but there's not a lot of diversity in terms of race. And so, but we do have that in our city. So how do we embrace that? And as the key leaders of this city, how do we bring diversity out and celebrate it? And really create an atmosphere where people feel welcomed and equal and have all the things of respect and joyfulness and trustworthy, you know, wrapped into that diversity. So they're the things that I value and I hope that as we work together, we will all come to value those things as well.
Joan, you're my other hero of the moment because you walked in today and volunteered too. So do you want to go next?
Yes, I do, and I have written mine out, so I apologize for reading it. All right, so you know when you're driving somewhere and you have little kids in the backseat and a few minutes into a long drive, one of them says, are we there yet? Well, for me, values are like that. They're about the journey, except you're never really quite there. My values are not what I think about, but what I aspire to practice. So my first value is democracy. To me, it's not just an idea or concept. It is a process that we as public servants need to create constantly. This means that we have to practice it every day. My second value is integrity. Integrity means to me that my behavior and actions are consistent with my values. My third value is responsibility and accountability because they are very intertwined. Responsibility is who is supposed to do what. Accountability is who should get credit or blame for how it turns out. I take my responsibilities as an elected official very seriously and have given a lot of thought to what I'm responsible for. While I have no responsibility or authority over how the other six members of council vote or over the mayor's administration of city services, I have the responsibility that every one of my votes reflect my perception of what is best for Edmonds. I hold myself accountable for getting and understanding the information I need to make legislative decisions. My fourth value is stewardship, which I equate with generosity. Wikipedia says that stewardship is an ethic that embodies the responsible planning and management of resources. As an elected official, I am responsible for considering present circumstances and considering stewardship of the future. To me, stewardship is generosity. It's caring about something that won't benefit you directly. It's looking at every decision as to how it will affect the future generations.
Thank you very much. Let's get somebody from the leadership team. How about you, Mr. Au Pair?
Okay, so again, in response to Jim's questionnaire, values that shape our career or things that we want to be known for. I put down service, as in servant leadership. Number two, I put down fiduciary, acting solely on behalf of the city I represent. Number three, courage, which I summarized as the ability to do something that frightens one. Sometimes there are moments as city attorney where you have to be courageous. Number four, I put down diplomacy, the art of dealing with people in a sensitive and effective way. And finally, I listed creativity, the ability to produce something new through imaginative skill, particularly a new solution to a problem.
What's going on?
Actually, I did write mine down as well and I will display them. First one is integrity. I believed in order for me to have healthy, ongoing relationship with others, be it my wife, class, staff I work with, others, honesty, integrity is foundational. Second one is transparency. Similar to like integrity, being transparent helps build relationship with others. Have no hidden agendas. Third, helping others. Helping others provides a certain enjoyment that's kind of hard to explain. Other than it's a feeling of experience that you can always feel by actually helping others. I belong on a few boards, Camp Fire, we help over eight thousand kids every year. Rotary, you know, we volunteer, we raise money. And so it's really kind of feels good to see the benefit that Rotary provides. House, belong on Mucka Fila House Festival. Again, it's bringing the community together and it's really kind of, it's a feel-good thing. Leadership. Leadership is one of the more rewarding values. As a leader, you have the ability to positively affect those around you. And it's, it's really, it is very thrilling to be a leader. Creativity. I believe creativity is one of the more exciting values. Problem-solving, overcoming challenges or creating new directions are constant in life. As you address these, I believe you have to step outside of the box and be creative. I know it's kind of hard to imagine if I'm a guy listening to me, but I think it's also a requirement to really kind of rise above. Thank you.
Shane, do you want to go next?
Sure. Sure. I may not, I view joyfulness as a positive can-do attitude. So I wake up every morning, seriously, and greet the day. I think it's perfect to always wake up happy. And that Pharaoh song keeps going on my, happy, I'm so happy. So I do try to wake up happy and seize the day. I'm a constant learner and educator and I think education is the root of knowledge and wisdom. And you can always learn from anybody, somebody, anybody, everybody. I also believe in honesty. I believe honesty is the best policy and that leads to truthfulness and respect. And that we need to be patient and diplomatic and try to work through our issues joyfully. I also believe in leadership and holding my head high. And this is kind of religious, but God will always show me the way.
By the way, I am producing a summary of this and these are so beautiful. If you have written these down, send them to me and I will put the whole definition into the notes. I think I'm doing a good job of notes, but I couldn't get all of your lovely words, Joan, are yours. Jeff and Diane, if you have that too, I'd love to capture all that, but I did get a lot of it, but anyway. Anybody else want to go next or who wants to go next? Thank you, Al.
So just trying to define core values.
So, just trying to define core values. We do it in the police department, we really should do it more as a city. And individually, these are my, these are my core values. Service is, that's what we're all about, certainly the police department, I think all the departments. And I'm about that individually. Integrity, once again, I think that's very important as a municipal corporation, that we display a high degree of integrity, and I've certainly attempted to do that personally. Respect, showing respect for others, earning respect, and this is something that we work on all the time in the police department, and I harp on it with my people. Respect is not something that is given. Respect is something that's earned, and we have to do that all the time. And I attempt to do that individually. Stewardship, being good stewards of the public's money, as well as being stewards as a police department and doing things to give back to the community. We're not just out there handing out tickets. We are actually out there doing things for the community, providing a very high level of service, as well as one of the charitable organizations that law enforcement's been very involved with over the years, the Special Olympics. And we participate regularly in that as a department. And then, stewardship as well, individually, giving back to the community, doing things for others, it's very important. And the last one, the core values that I listed, is appreciation. Being able to show appreciation for others, and hopefully, once in a while, seeing some appreciation shown. And I will tell you, I am very honored to get a lot of letters that come into the police department, and I can tell you that the ratio is probably ten to one, ten letters showing appreciation versus the one that has some complaint. And I think that speaks very well for our police department, and we try and do the same thing in return, show appreciation, and I think we do earn some of those letters, and it's very, very nice when we do get them. So, those are my core values.
Laura, just because you're sitting between Joan and Al, and they've got, do you wanna go next?
I was, I was holding out hope of going last, because then there would be no need to explain the words on the list, because everybody would have already used them. Okay, number one is family, not necessarily a business, you know, related value, but nonetheless, part of what makes me tick. Fairness, service, and self-respect.
Do you want to say anything to explain?
Um, fairness, probably self-explanatory. Service is probably somewhere on everybody's list, it's more or less why we're all doing what we're doing. And self-respect is just recognition, recognition of the realities of the position. We have opportunities to behave in ways that we might not, might not earn the highest respect. The finance director has an opportunity to work with, in general, business, to certain consultants if he chose to, or, you know, in, in these positions, you have the opportunity to motivate yourself by doing favors for somebody instead of by serving the city. And so, for me, I just try to make sure that, that I can live with the decisions I make, and if I'm being asked to do something that I really don't respect that sort of conduct, I try not to get involved there.
Okay, great. Let's just go to this side of the room so that we don't get accused of being prejudiced for that side. Carry on.
Um, I, my list of values, at the top, lands professionalism, and it's all of our abilities and my ability to use my experience and be respectful and polite and trustworthy and gain that trust, and, and really have a high level of expectation for myself to be professional in all that I do. Vision is on my list as well, and for me, that is the ability to, to think and see outside of the box, to plan for the future, to get beyond the day-to-day, and of course, we have to, and I have to deal with the day-to-day, but I mostly, I spend my time at the macro level and thinking, and having, having a vision for beyond that as well. Integrity is on my list as well, and I've heard that many, many of us use that word. And for me, that means just being, you know, having, working together for the common good and having our, our values and our expectations of ourselves and others be consistent with each other. And so, so that's on my list. Collaboration and teamwork, and this is, you know, Laura, you used the word family, and my family's up there as well, and I use the collaboration teamwork because we're all in it together, and it takes the, sort of the village to, to work together. And for me, that means we have and find common goals, we have effective communication, we work together, not against each other, and we trust and depend on one another, and, and we find that we can depend on each other, and that we're bringing our, our best foot forward, and that we're all different, and we come, we, we come from a different lens, all of us. And for us to be able to walk together as a group and, and be one team is important to me. And then, leadership is also on my list, and that's the ability to, to be able to work with a team of people to accomplish goals, and to be able to take that lead role in things that I, I think I have experience and knowledge of, and that I can help with. So, those are my goals, values.
Strom, how about you next?
Sure. I started with trust, and that's kind of, I guess, the two-way street that, that I always started relationship from a, from a trust standpoint, and especially, kind of, especially here that I, you know, I trust people to do their jobs. I think Tom kind of touched on that a little bit as well, and I hope that that is, is returned. But that's, the second part of that equation isn't as important, I just, it's more important for me to, to, to trust somebody and to, kind of in my own head, than it really is to, to get that back, at least, obviously. Integrity is, kind of goes hand in hand with that, but I always strive to, again, just hold that up, again, kind of internally, to make sure that I'm speaking about things that I believe in, and advocating for things that, that are important to me. And one of those values would be equality, and always looking at, at an issue from that standpoint, whether it's equality of people, trying to give a voice to people that may, that don't have a voice, or maybe aren't, or even are not that interested upfront. I think that's just part of that kind of representative democracy, is trying to create that equality with people that, again, for, may just be too busy to be that interested. But that, that sense of equality is always something that I strive for. And that kind of goes hand in hand with compassion, and just having compassion for, for people and situations, for issues. You know, I spoke earlier about the environment and having, and that's kind of giving a voice to, to those things, giving a voice to the environment, and that's, you know, not just about people. And then, the last value is innovation, and I think a couple of people touched on creativity, and really trying to look at creative and often fun ways, joyful ways of, of addressing a problem, because that's really where you get excited about something, is where you come up with an innovative approach to, to a situation. And that's where, that's where it gets fun, and that's where the compassion comes in, and that I, you know, trust that other people are looking for that, to find that. So, those are the values that, some of the values that I have.
Thank you. So, going between councilmembers and members of the leadership teams, Scott, do you wanna go next?
Sure. So, I identified integrity as my number one, and I think that involves honesty with oneself and with others. It involves being ethical and moral. Another definition of integrity is to be whole or undiminished. I think someone who has integrity keeps their promises, they, they do the right thing even when no one is looking. My second one is trust, and trust is a reliance on the integrity or the ability of a person or a thing. Number, number three was respect. Actually, I looked at the dictionary, because it really provided me some insights on some of these, and respect is a deference to a right, privilege, position, or someone, or something considered to have certain rights or privileges. And then, the other side of, of the respect definition is a proper acceptance, or courtesy, or acknowledgement. And so, I agree with both of those definitions, that I, I do think respect is, is very important in, in both those two ways. Creativity, or the freedom to be creative or innovative is important to me. The dictionary says it's an ability to transcend traditional ideas, rules, patterns, relationships, et cetera, and to create meaningful new ideas, forms, methods, interpretations, and so forth. And that's important to me as well. And then, my last one, I put achievement, and I think it's probably similar to what some of the other people said about service. And at the end of the day, I think we're all public servants, and ultimately, I want to achieve, I wanna accomplish something. And so, the dictionary says it is something that is accomplished especially by a superior ability, special effort, or great courage, and so forth. And so, that's important to me as well.
Can you do one for next?
Sure. Some of the values, I've written and rewritten this a couple of times on scratch, I've rewritten. Fairness, respectfulness, leadership, walk the walk, and trust. And in that fairness, what I mean by that is equal representation for all, not just representation for some. Paying close attention to those in our community that need the most sorts of support, so the seniors, the disabled, the mentally ill, the, the people that need our, our support more than others. Respectfulness for everyone's opinions, not dismissive of people's opinions because they differ from ours, because I think that's what makes us unique, is that we all have certain opinions regarding, and that doesn't mean we're white, we're right, we're wrong necessarily, it means we have these opinions. Leadership, that's a value that I've often lived by, and that's open and honesty and integrity and being ethical, and we hear integrity over and over again today, and I think that's a strong theme. Walk the walk, that's something I, I choose to live by. In order to put yourself in somebody's shoes, you have to walk that walk, you have to understand what's occurring, and you have to be willing to get your hands dirty, or you have to be willing to get out of your comfort zone to really understand what's occurring in somebody else's view. And trust, probably the biggest, one of the biggest things that we're hearing this to, is trust and how you trust others, not being lied to, to make points, just being very, don't lie to me, because when you lie to me, I'll never trust you, you know? Having that ability to understand that, that when you say some, something to me, I'm gonna take it at its word until you turn the other way, and then I'm not sure I can ever regain that, or it's very hard. Something I've posted recently that I find to be very characteristic of me at least is, it's work for a cause, not for applause. Live life to express, not to impress. Don't strive to make your presence noticed, make your absence felt. And I think that's something that's really important to me in the way I choose to live my life.
I'm gonna rate you for that.
Sure.
I do have to ask one question.
Sure.
Is walk the walk part of your definition of leadership, or is that a separate value?
Separate value.
Okay.
Separate value. Category all to its own.
Thank you.
Where did you get that quote?
I stole it. Actually.
Because I may have other good quotes.
I actually took it from a friend.
Rob, we don't want you to collapse this time. Do we go next?
No, I mean, there's some commonalities, because, you know, integrity, honesty. And honesty, I think you have to make a distinction between, you can be honest, but not always right. I mean, there is a very big difference between honesty and being mistaken. And I'm not gonna say I'm never mistaken, because I certainly can be, but I'm always honest. And so, going along with that, I think another key thing is perspective, and that encompasses a number of things, and one of those being listening well. It's absolutely important to me to be a good listener, because I always try, I think it's very important to understand where somebody else is coming from. You may not agree with them, but you need to understand why they think the way they do, what their perspective is, because ultimately, you need to find common ground whenever you can. And particularly, when you're, you know, working with a number of different people who may have different interests, different ideas and so forth, it's always important to find common ground, because if you always search for winners and losers, that can be very destructive in the long haul. So, that's something that's very important to me. And along with that, I would also go to what I mentioned earlier, which is very interested in sort of understanding where you've come from, history versus what is emerging in the future, trying to be creative, innovative in addressing things. And particularly, in a government sense, you have to understand the different roles and responsibilities. So, I understand in some cases, I can be a decision-maker, and others, somebody else is that decision-maker in my role. That sense can be one of decision support, helping somebody else understand the options, possibilities, what, you know, they can make the best decision they can make. I may not agree with it, but I absolutely live with it and move on, and support that decision.
Dave, do you wanna go next?
Oh.
You don't?
Sure. Well, certainly, a lot of common language going around today. For me, probably one of the underlying values, and I'm really talking about government on this, and then when we get into interests, but I think particular values, their underlying core with the city government or anybody. And for me, a combination of trust leading to respect is an underlying core value that's important to me. Too often, and I'm guilty of this sometimes, when I hear an answer I don't like, it somehow then says, "Well, now, can I trust that person?" When an, when, when the answer really is what their opinion is, or what their factual basis is for their opinion. And as long as I can gain that trust, that whatever they say is well-intended and honest, I find it a great value. That in turn leads to respect. As I used to, when I worked with my real estate brokers in my office, my, one of my first discussions with the nation was, "If you ever get into trouble over a legal issue, come and tell me about it right away, and I'll go to the mat for you, if you're telling me the truth." If I find out, on the other hand, you come to me and it's not the truth, then we have a problem. Now, in my business in real estate, it was really easy to take care of that problem, because you walked to the bulletin board, took the license off, signed it, and handed it to the agent. It's more complicated in our lives today. But nonetheless, trust leading to respect, I want to respect everyone. And when someone walks in my office, I start from the premise of, "I trust you, and I have respect for you." Then it's up to the relationship that you build during that period of time. Collaboration, I think, is an underlying important issue to me, and as an example, the directors and I meet, well, really twice a week, but once as a group alone. I have a great group of collaborators. They all understand that when we put together our requests and set our priorities, that not all of them are going to be in first place or second place, but we learn to work our way through that. The most delightful collaboration experience I've had with them is after the last year, when we filled out all of the decision packages- when we filled out all of their decision packages and turned them in to me, I could walk into the room and say, guess what, I'm going to grant all of your decision packages. There were 51 of them, and we didn't have to collaborate anymore. It was a great experience. Another important value to me, and hasn't been mentioned, is patience. Sometimes folks may not think I'm being very patient, but patience is incredibly important in this business. And I think, at least when I'm working with staff, I am patient. And the last one for me, and hasn't been mentioned, core value frankly, is humor. We all get so damn serious all the time.
Joyfulness.
Well, you have your version of it. But it's really, it's an important aspect of one's life. We have to understand that we can climb off our high horse every once in a while and have a good time. I wish I had feeling of more liberty in some of the council meetings, so that I could inject the humor that I enjoy so much. But it would be taken wrong in all different levels. Nonetheless, humor is an important ingredient for us to build, actually, to respect, to trust, and collaboration. That's it.
And Shane, I don't think you've got it.
Oh. So a few values that came to mind include sustainability, and by that I mean achieving altogether environmental health, economic health, and social health, not just for all of us today, but for future generations, and trying to think that way about everything. And then kindness, and referring to acting in a way that's thoughtful towards others, not just thinking it, but acting in a way that's thoughtful towards other people's minds. And honesty, which is really being trustworthy in my mind, trustworthy and true in speech and action. And respect, which seems to have been talked about a lot, but I do believe that every human being is worthy of respect, and that if we work in an atmosphere of respect, we will do so in a way that has much better results, and takes into account everybody's perspective. And doesn't need agreement on everything, but just recognizing that the importance of other people's viewpoints. And then good work, and that really takes into account service and all those things. And by good work, I mean not only hard work, although I value that too, but working effectively to do the right things. And finally, on the list, relationships, not because they're last, but relationships are important, whether they're our family, or friends, or professional, or any other part. Interacting with others is just critical to life, everything we do. So those are all important.
So if I'm not mistaken, Christiana, you're the last, you get the last word among your council colleagues, and then we'll go to Phil, who hasn't spoken about it.
My number one value is honesty and personal integrity. I think above all else, that is what I value. Secondly, I value, and these are not necessarily in order, I value professional expertise. I value that in our directors, and I value that in my personal contribution to the city. I also feel that value is fiscal responsibility, and this is something that I feel is valuable, that this is the best decision for the city. Personally, my value, I really rely heavily on rational analysis of issues. I want all the information, I want it presented in a way that makes sense, so that I can help choose amongst the alternatives. Something that's very important personally is creative problem solving. I don't want to just be told what the answer is, but I want to be told what the problem is, and then go through a process whereby we can think about the solutions to that problem. One of the values that I had crossed off my list, but I was just reminded of, and I'll add it, is kindness and thoughtfulness. I think that's really important. And finally, one of my personal values that I haven't heard others mention, but I'm sure others do have this value, and that is, I believe in hard work. I want to do all my homework, I want to be prepared, I want to make good decisions, and I think that takes a lot of hard work.
Thank you. Phil?
It's an honor to go last, actually. I had everything written down, I haven't changed but one word in listening to what was said. It's amazing, the overlap here. But, you know, what we do is vitally important, serious business in providing services to the public of all different types, that if they're not provided, can have some really bad outcomes. So it is a serious business, but you also just need to see it every once in a while, but it's also hilarious at certain times. And so I believe that comments made about humor are really important. It helps me every day to find something funny about what's going on, just puts a smile on my face and kind of allows me to redouble my efforts.
He comes into my office laughing every day.
Except for the days that I'm crying. Anyway, yeah, a sense of humor is huge. Kindness has been mentioned, I really believe in that. One thing I wanted to say is, while we're sitting here, there's calls coming to this city all day long, people that have worked on something, don't know how to solve a problem, and our people are resolving those issues for them. And it's really a very, very small percentage of those calls that even make it to my phone, where they didn't quite get the result they were looking for. And of the calls that come to me and the other directors, I think a small fraction of those end up probably also coming to you, and there are probably some that contact you directly first. But I think we need to keep a perspective on that. I think there's a lot of just wonderful work out there being done, that most of the problems are being solved very effectively, and not allow ourselves to believe that the ones we're just hearing about are really the voices of Edmonds. It's a much larger problem than that, and I think there's a lot of good work being done. So, and our people are being kind and doing it, and I try to be the same. Make sure that you go above and beyond what the citizen has really a right to say, expect in terms of an outcome, and try to provide a really high level of service. It's fun to do, it's fun to surprise people in that way. Helpful person, and when I wrote that down, I was thinking about how I work with the council in particular. I want to help you. It's what energizes me every day. If I know what you want to get done, what your main top three things are, that you want to accomplish during your term, or during your two terms, or however long you're here, in a general sense, where you're trying to go, I want to know that, and I want to be helpful, I want to be seen as being helpful. It's only when I'm confused about that, it probably seems like I'm not being helpful. But that's a big value for me, is to help everybody get what they need, want. Truthfulness has been mentioned. Respect, I wonder if you just draw a distinction between respect for, because I think there's two levels of it, respect for a position, and we all have positions of leadership, and I think as a result, do a certain amount of respect just because of our position. But that's not the key piece. It's respect for the person, and that's based on a relationship, and that takes work, and that takes a lot of time and effort. So I think there's two pieces to that. When we're in a public setting, I think we all owe each other and our public to show respect for the positions we both have, regardless of what issues might separate us. That can be worked out a lot of times, I think, one-on-one or in small groups, and I'm glad we're making these efforts to try to do that. Innovation, that was mentioned, I love doing that. Problem solving is, I think, what we all get into this for, big problems especially. Big problems would have been solved a long time ago if they were easy. So it requires new thinking, new ideas, tremendous effort, hard work, as you mentioned. And anything worthwhile has probably got a thousand things that's keeping it from happening, different attitudes, different perspectives, finances, whatever the problems are. That's what I think we all enjoy doing, is solving those kind of problems. Love it. And I think that's the value piece. Another idea on outcomes versus process, but...
We are running about 35 minutes behind. I imagine we would take a little time to kind of talk a little bit about common interests. Let me just do this. The ones I heard most often, and I'm kind of keeping a little tally, were integrity, respect, trust, and leadership. But there is a whole bunch more important ones. I want to put them into the notes. I'd like to reiterate that if you have them on your computer, you want to send me them, I will incorporate them into these notes. This is a dangling participle at the moment, but we will certainly pick this up again. So at this point, I just want to go on to have you talk a little bit about your interests. And what I'd like to do with this is just answer one question at a time. So the first question is, what are your interests in serving the people of Edmonds? In this case, I just want to start with and finish the council members before we move to the mayor and the directors. So, and to make it easy, let's start with Diane, and just go around the room till we get to Tom, and then we'll go back to some of the administration.
So just one question, what do we ask?
Yes, we're going to do one at a time. So the first question is, what are your interests in serving the people of Edmonds?
Lead by example.
Is that it?
Well, I actually, you know, walk the walk, as Adrian would say, but you lead by example to be a leader. So, you know, be respectful, I mean, it just falls into the respect, the integrity, the, you know, all of the issue of hold your head high, walk through the storm. You know, don't wallow in the past, don't listen to gossip, and move forward. Be a leader.
Christiana, what are your interests in serving the people of Edmonds?
I feel I have a special interest, because Edmonds is my hometown, and I've had a long history in Edmonds. I have six areas of interest, which I will just summarize briefly as transportation, land use, environment, historic preservation, economic development, and neighborhood enhancement. And I gave you a written copy of that.
Yeah, thank you. Hayden?
My interests are similar to some of my values, at least. Trying to do what we can as a city to help those most in need, whatever that might be. Keeping our environment at the forefront of what we do. Like Ms. Johnson, I've also lived within three miles of the house I was born in for 50, oh, so many years. So this is, and I've lived in Edmonds for 30, so this really is my home. And I think environmentally, I often tell people, you know, when we, for instance, talk about the marsh, I don't know how many people can remember that the marsh almost went out to Dayton when I was growing up, and we see where the marsh is now, and we're fighting to maintain, as a group, we're fighting to maintain the marsh where it sits. And I often think about, you know, what would have happened if the councils before us and the leadership before us would have done that where our environment would have been. So with the environment, though, also comes the animals that are connected with the environment, and the fish in the waters, and our sea creatures, and those are all of the interests that I really have for Edmonds.
Protect and enhance our quality of life. I pretty much apply that to looking at any of the decisions that come before us, or any of the interactions I have with citizens. And if something, if something we're doing or considering clearly improves our quality of life, I'm all in. And if something we're doing or considering, I find it hard to perceive how this is helping us, then I am dragging my feet.
I have a long list, I'll try to make it short. My first interest in serving the people of Edmonds is open government. And I want us to start seeing, really seeing the citizens as part of our team. And I think that means more than just allowing three-minute comments and having citizen commissions and groups. I think it means engaging them in many other ways, and providing many opportunities for input, and listening to them. What I, the second thing, what I've seen in the two and a half years that I've been on council, is that there's not clarity about what council's responsibilities, even though it's well defined in the law, there's not clarity about the distinction between what the legislative body, council's responsibilities are, and the administrative body, the mayor's responsibilities are. I think we really need to delineate that clearly. And that will have a lot to do with accountability, in terms of who's accountable for what. And I would like to know that when I ask for information, I'm going to get it in a way that's going to also be presented to the citizens. So the other things that I'm really interested in, as people know, is the code rewrite, the update of the critical areas ordinance, and the shoreline master plan. Everything that has to do with our laws and ordinances, we're, we really need to get that together, because what I think has happened with the fact that our code is such a mess at this point, is that it's difficult to enforce, and it's being enforced unfairly. And there's not, and that's a value that a lot of people have talked about, that there's not fairness in the enforcement of our laws. And in terms of specific interests, I was shocked when I learned that we have nothing in our comp plan about an emergency vehicle and pedestrian emergency access over the railroad tracks. That's finally in our capital improvement plan, but it's lumped in with addressing the railroad and ferry at great crossing issues. I strongly believe that we need to separate that out and focus on pedestrian and emergency vehicle access over the railroad tracks as a separate issue, and I think we need to address it really soon, the results of what might happen if, you know, we don't have it, it's just a miracle we haven't had many deaths related to it. Or, anyway. And then an interest I have is creating a destination at the waterfront for everybody, everyone in the city that can enjoy and appreciate, and it would be, it could be a thriving economic draw to people from all over. And there are, you know, I have lots of ideas about how we can go about doing this, and it's really related to my vision of the city, but it's also related to so many things I've heard from other people, and what other people would like to see down there. And then I have an interest in increasing the number of younger people. We have an aging population, we have way too many older people. I mean, it's, okay, let me put it this way, it's imbalanced. So I have an interest in increasing the number of young people, young couples, young families who live, work, and play in Edmonds, and providing the opportunities for people to be interested in living here and working here. And then I have an interest in enhancing the neighborhoods, and connecting the neighborhoods through a real transportation, you know, shuttle, or some way of getting the people into the downtown easily, and out to the neighborhoods easily.
Thank you. Scott?
One of my interests in government is, I guess, really government, and proving, or showing the people of Edmonds that government works. I'm a big advocate of government is... taken care of, but even more importantly, the phone calls that never get made. So sometimes it's kind of invisible what government does, but, but from my kind of public persona of as an elected official is really advocating for government. And part of that is also being an advocate for a representative democracy, that we as elected officials have a certain responsibility to take a leadership role and make decisions, obviously collaborating with each other and with, and with our hired experts to, to be on the forefront of decision-making. And that goes into the next of all interests that I have is just making progress, that we're, that we're moving forward. That if, even with things that, that I may disagree on, once it's, once it takes place, I want people to feel that, that Edmonds is making progress. One of the reasons I got into local politics was there was at least a sense in town that they're not getting anything done. And government, I know, was at a very slow and glacial pace, which is usually a good thing, that we don't jump into things too quickly, but giving, giving people a sense that we're making progress on whatever the issue is. So those are kind of my, my bigger government picture interests. I could list a whole bunch of smaller things, but that's, gives a good sense of what I'm about.
Okay. Tom?
If I was going to describe the interests that I have, I want you to keep them in the context of quality of life. So that's the overarching umbrella that I have five things listed on my, my page. So the first is economic development. You know, without that, that's the fuel that drives the engine. So if we don't have good economic development under that quality of life umbrella, we don't have fuel to do the things that we really, really want to do. And so, you know, making sure that we create an atmosphere and we create a structure for that to happen becomes crucial for us. I think one of the first steps in that is, is the waterfront, as Joan talked about. You know, the waterfront we have is our, really our best asset as a city, and so we've not developed that asset in a way that will be attractive, will flourish, will create a center of activity. And I think that's a real step in the right direction. And I did put underneath that umbrella the railroad transit issues that we have. So, you know, I think that's a big package in that we can, we can solve that big package. Thirdly, I put down more citizen engagement. So how do we, you know, embrace the fact that we are a democracy and that we want people's ideas and thoughts on the table? In what, you know, in my six weeks of being on the council now, so I have a lot of experience, in my six weeks of being on the council, you know, what I see is that people come out for particular issues, but they don't come out for the overall engagement. And so then how do we, you know, set a framework for that so that we do get more citizen engagement involved in things? And it's difficult because people have busy lives and they have other things that they're involved with. But if we work at it, then we can solve that. The fourth thing I put on my list is more parks. We never have enough parks. And then, you know, how can we facilitate that? I think the marsh is, is part of that public lands of what that might look like and, you know, how do we create some engagement around that, the enjoyment of it? Where I live, there are people that set up on weekends, they set up their cameras on weekends to look at the birds that are in the wildlife in the marsh area. And it's, it's fun to see how that attracts people from outside our city and the hours they spend, you know, enjoying what the marsh brings to, to life here in the Pacific Northwest. And so that's all fun to see, but we don't have one of those things. And then the fifth thing is really one of the, going back to an overarching theme, is facilitating change. So I, I really believe in life, that change is a constant. So if we don't change, then change passes us by. And then you become victims of change rather than facilitating change. So we need to embrace change because it happens all the time. So what are then we doing as the leaders of this community to facilitate that change, to be on top of that change, to be a little bit ahead of that change, to direct that change? Because change is going to happen. And so where are we with that? And if, if I can be helpful in facilitating that change and change in the direction that we want to go, then, then that'll be a plus.
Thank you. Did you have a respect for the fact that you two are elected officials? Do you want to go next?
I won't say no list. Well, we started with your request to have one issue, but now it's like hearing people go through their list. Which would you like to go?
Oh, I'm sorry, you might have all missed it. I had just asked, what are your interests in serving the people of Edmonds? And I think in my email to you last week, it just said, you know, a couple. So I didn't mean to say you could only say one.
Oh, well, that's what I was.
I'm sorry. What I, what I meant to say was that, one question at a time. So I apologize if, Diane, for example, if you kept it to one, I didn't mean to.
That's all right.
So I haven't seen anyone violate the government.
I could go through all twenty-six of mine.
Maybe you should pick the top couple.
For me, bringing a positive focus to and within the community. It is so easy for us when we get into debate to have negative energy, but in fact, we're all looking for a positive result as we come out the other end. So I, I want, I want, if I can leave one thing with the community, it is a positive feeling about itself, it is a positive energy about itself. And then also that same feeling of energy and positiveness from the people outside as they learn about Edmonds. I think that's a piece we sometimes overlook. We sometimes worry about what's going on within our geographic boundaries and forget about the way that the world might be looking at us. Sort of a technical thing, but maintaining Edmonds financial viability. It's one of the reasons I ran. I could see that we were in trouble financially. We had to make hard decisions, and we made them at the right time because now this year our financial decisions have some flexibility. I want to be able to keep the community safe. Of course, that goes with public safety. And I think all of us electeds are supportive of that underlying interest. I'm very interested in establishing clear distinction between the role of policymakers and the administration. It's too easy to wander back and forth for all of us. But for me, there, there is a clear role. And as Jim mentioned in the beginning a couple of times, we've had to kind of outline what my expectations are as far as the interaction with staff. Another thing that I'm terribly interested in is encouraging the staff to flourish. That's hard to do sometimes when you're short-staffed, which we have been, and when we have certain kinds of restrictions. But the staff needs to feel like they can grow professionally all the time. And I think we're probably talking mostly about, in that case, directors and managers. But there's, it's, it's bad juju if everyone feels confined and roped in. And the last thing I'd, I'd mention is talking with, speaking to what Tom just mentioned. We have, we have a couple of choices with growth. And one of them is to try and grab it and shape it the way we want it to look. And the other one is to let it trample you. And we can go up over the hill, excuse me, we're saying it this way. We can go up over the hill and see what trampling looks like. I'm respectful that we will have disagreements here on how we grow, but in fact, change happens. It will happen, and we need to manage it together in a way that is beneficial to all of us. That's it.
Dan? I apologize if you misinterpreted me and we kind of stifled you, but.
What's coming in the future. And if people aren't thinking or talking about that, I think it's part of my interest is to raise or identify those that are potentially coming down the pike and have people think about them, debate them, and not ignore them. It's one of the things you, you know, one of my favorite phrases, you can love a place to death. And I totally get that people love Edmonds. But if you love it in such a way that you want to simply freeze-dry it, it will, you will get trampled, using that phrase, because things change. I mean, Adrian had a great example about Highway ninety-nine and what she was seeing in terms of, you know, crime, moving in and so forth. And, you know, that has nothing to do with Edmonds. That has to do with what's happening around Edmonds. So you always have to be aware and understand what those other trends are, what's going on around you, what's going inside, and trying to put all those pieces together. So my prime interest is trying to look at the big picture and have that overall overarching view and not just get into the minutia without understanding its place in the larger picture.
Thank you. Al, how about you next?
Sure. So I think I mentioned earlier, we all know one of the fundamental roles of government at every level is, is public safety. And the mayor touched on it in his comments just a short time ago. It's very important that we do everything that we can as municipal government, specifically as the police department, to enhance the quality of life and to enhance a feeling of safety and security among our citizens. We do that by keeping an eye on the criminal activity, keeping an eye on neighborhood problems, trying to utilize a holistic approach rather than a bandied approach. I think our people have been very good in the, in the police department with doing that to very best extent possible. We're working right now, for example, with the city attorney's office on an abatement. We're having a lot of problems with a particular residence. And we have been there an enormous number of times, a very frustrating situation. But we're trying to employ a more holistic approach in, in going this route to try and, again, allow the people in that neighborhood to feel safe. They were apprehensive about even going outside their own homes. And there's something terribly wrong when situation evolves to that. We try and do all of this by being responsive. Yes, we answer the nine-one-one calls, but we certainly try and take it to the next level and that, with that holistic approach. It's important that we're accountable, and it's very important that we're professional. We do that by investigating ourselves if a complaint comes in or if it's a very serious matter, a criminal allegation gets leveled against one of our members or very serious policy violation. We will even have an outside agency come in, as we have done in the past, to provide a level of accountability and a very fair investigation. We've been very good at using innovation, and we do that through technology, we do that through training. It also has its underpinnings with the hiring of the people that we bring to the police department. Because if you don't have the fabric, the clothes aren't going to hold up very long. And we try and get people with very good ethics, you know, the things that we've talked about around this table today, that's so important in positions of trust, in particular with public safety. So this all starts with, with the hiring, the backgrounding, the retention of our people. And I've tried, and my leadership team has tried to our very best to conduct the orchestra, so to speak, provide leadership and direction of the department. We've had some real challenges budget-wise, but we're, we're doing better now, and I'm thankful that we received some additional funding. Actually, we just last week made a promotion of the assistant chief that was funded again this year, which was really needed in the department. And we've got some other irons in the fire that we're going to be bringing forward to council for some further discussion to help us, give us the tools to further deal with the holistic approaches as opposed to the bandied approach. So I'm looking forward to coming back here and just a bit, talking about my interests and the process, but those are, those are my interests as, as the chief of the Edmonds Police Department. And I will follow shortly with most.
Scott, you're next, please.
Thank you. I desire to make a difference, not only difference, but a positive difference. I know that as like a husband or a father or a boss, coworker, subordinate, et cetera, I know that how I choose to live, to work, play, coach others, are be coached. Now I listen in packs, those around. I desire to make a positive difference in all those situations. Another interest is I want to be an effective leader. I desire to be a person who can lead others to new horizons, helping others realize their potential. Another thing is, is I like to create a financial awareness about all the needs of the city. Your defense interests that are seated in park generation, creating parks. I value those, but I think there are other things that we have to realize that also need good, sound financial stewardship. We have our infrastructure, our streets, our sidewalks, our buildings. They all need attention, and we can't ignore those. And so I, I desire to create awareness by inventorying those needs and putting it out for decision-makers to weigh in on what gets funded. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Bill?
I was struck by how different people have interpreted individual interests, and some of them are very specific, and I would start with that. Obviously, my department is totally focused on creating sustainable infrastructure, the stuff you can't see that's buried underground, some of the obvious things above ground, trying to make sure that the improvements that are necessary to sustain that long-term and improve it when we need additional capacity are timed and programmed and resourced to happen when they need to happen. You know, that's, that's my job, I think, is to have a sustainable infrastructure, bring you options to create that and maintain that long-term. I don't think I need to get more specific about that. And that's challenged, of course, by the funding sources we have. We've got our utilities which have their own separate funding, and with your cooperation and support in generating great revenue to do that job, they can be self-sustaining. It's more complicated and more difficult, I think, when the source of funding is general government dollars and we're competing with all the other interests that are out there for that. But that really is the interest that I think I most identify myself with. I did want to talk about more the general interest, and it's this outcomes versus process sort of, not, not versus, that's really the wrong word. They do have to support each other. The process needs to support the outcome. The outcome needs to be the result of the process. I certainly get that. But I think all of us come from a different point on that spectrum as to how you balance how you, where you really focus your energies, if it's on the process. To me, I'm probably, and you've undoubtedly noticed this already, I'm sort of over to the right here, where what I'm focused on is the outcome. To me, the process is what we need to go through to get to the outcome. It's a means to this end. And I think you could make an equally effective case that, I've heard it made even here today, that the process isn't at some level the outcome. If you have a good process, then whatever the outcome is, by definition, it was the right outcome. I think both of those are valid perspectives, just so people know, my mind tends to be over in this direction. And I'm looking at the city plans as you do, and all different types related to infrastructure. And I see projects and problems that are listed on there that are to be solved, and I see that as my job to bring you a process to do that. But I'm really focused always on the outcome, getting it done on time and hopefully within budget and delivering a project we can all be proud of. But I think occasionally we bump into each other with those different perspectives on where that focus ought to be. I just wanted to point that out.
True.
Yeah, my interest in serving the citizens of Edmonds is really to be able to give back and provide a value add to the community and be part of the community and to make a difference in people's lives and quality of life. And I think that in the Parks Department, part of the way I can do that is to be able to do long-range planning and short-range planning and work with the staff to be able to provide a comprehensive, robust parks and recreation system and cultural art system. And I think that in turn, that increases our health and wellness in a community, it impacts economic development, it, it impacts real estate values, it increases all of our quality of life. and recreation system, and cultural art system. And I think that, in turn, that increases our health and wellness in a community, it impacts economic development, it impacts real estate values, it increases all of our quality of life, it provides for social enrichment and support, and is sort of a, sort of a fabric of the community. And so that's, that's my interest. I also, as many of you know, wear the Human Resources hat, and since I've taken on that role, really have taken that responsibility seriously, and want to be able to create a work environment that is positive, that's equitable, that values employees, that encourages excellence. And that's fun. We, we like to have fun. And I think in turn, that, that actually increases our morale and in turn provides citizens with better service. And if we have a low morale and employees that aren't happy, that's not, it, it totally equals the, the type of customer service that we can provide, I think. So if we can provide a holistic environment with which people can work in and, and have fun, I think that in turn serves the citizens of Edmonds.
Okay.
I also, the other piece of that, and, and Phil touched on that, my, my job and, and my interest is in making all of your elected, all the elected officials we have to make your jobs easier, to be able to use my experience and my knowledge and pull things together to, to give you options with which to make informed decisions and, and move the community along. And so that, that's the core of what I do. And I also feel like my interest is to bring you my, the best options that you have in front of you with which to help the community increase their quality of life.
Thank you. Scott, and then we'll go to Jeff.
Yeah, so going towards the end, you get kind of the benefit of hearing everyone else's insights and perspectives.
I've been watching a bit.
Oh, yeah. So my interest is very much in alignment with, I think, most of the council members and everyone else here. So I kind of amalgamated it into facilitate positive change to improve the quality of life in Edmonds. And so obviously, the council is more on the, the policy end of that spectrum, and I'm more on the administration side of that spectrum. And essentially, I want customers, and by customers, I mean the council, I mean the business community, residents, my coworkers, pretty much everyone. I want them to feel like they're receiving the level of service from the city that they deserve. And if they don't, and if they're not, and if we're falling short, I want to be sort of a catalyst, and I want to facilitate a way to, to improve that quality of life. I want to facilitate the, the democratic process and help people understand how they can access government. I think quality of life might take the form, several forms. It could be an improved city process that is more convenient, or maybe it's more open. It could be a capital project, it could be a parks improvement, it could be a code or a, a new practice that enhances the safety and welfare of the community. So a, as a 20-year resident of Edmonds who doesn't plan on going anywhere soon, and with a family, I'm sort of taking the long view of it. So I want to, I do have a direct interest in making sure that Edmonds remains a healthy place to raise children, that it's healthy both economically, environmentally, and it's a good place to live, work, and play. So whatever I can do to facilitate that is, is my priority.
Thank you. Okay, well, my, my interest is I, I want to, as I said before, I want to be a force for good governance. And that basically means defending the municipal corporation of Edmonds. And that also means, you know, making sure that I'm assisting in, whether it's training or assisting people in understanding their legal obligations and roles. Similarly, I'm interested in helping to foster an understanding about the respective roles of council and administration. I'm interested in helping the council articulate its policy goals. And I'm interested in helping the administration in implementing the council's policy goals.
The next question is, what are your interests in this process? Or really, what goals or outcomes do you seek? And I'd like us to go quickly, and can you just list one? What is the outcome that you would most like to see from this process? And if you should get to the point where you've heard the one that is most important to you, maybe you just quickly comment on that. So let's start with Scott, and we'll just go around this way.
Wow. I want to have fun. You know, I, I enjoy activities, golf, date night, socializing with others. And I also want to have enjoyment in the workplace. And so I like to facilitate that in my department. I feel like happy employees are productive employees, and so I believe in that.
Okay. So, but let me just ask, so this process you hope results in a situation where it makes it easier for you as a director to help providing enjoyment for the work?
I think so. I think having fun is also seeing us get along, respect others, and have a common direction. And that all, only can happen if we're, we're working along, enjoying the process and not battling through it.
Okay. Dave?
I want us to be able to, we've all articulated this many different ways. I want to find a way that we can assure ourselves that we work with one another with trust and respect, keeping an eye, keeping in my ultimate goal, as I've mentioned, under one of my interests of bringing a positive focus to and within the community.
Strom, the number one outcome you want to see from this process?
Think if we can get a clarity of roles and responsibilities, and how, in some ways, we need to stay in our lanes.
Phil?
Yeah. You said it better than I. I was just going to say that-
Like in swimming pool, or?
Just, just respecting the differences between the policymaking side and the, and the policy implementing side, and our various roles there. It's in that context, just getting much better at communicating with each other, trying to understand each other. And the other thing is just mistakes get made. We're all people. As individuals, we make mistakes. Heck, as a group, we make mistakes too. And that doesn't mean that anybody behaved badly or did something wrong, or needs to be called out, or we just need to fix it and go on to the next thing, because we're doing great stuff too. I guess that's what I would say.
Mine is being able to create mutual understanding and respect, effective communication. And I think those were all touched on. And, and also, you know, starting to understand and learn each other's values and priorities with which we bring into the workplace so that we can work together as a team. And, and like Phil, I, I would like to also offer that, you know, working with each other with grace, that, you know, we, we all want to be creative and innovative and think outside the box, and mistakes will be made. And, you know, learning how to forgive and be graceful with each other and move along and, and work in an effective environment.
I really liked Strom's, Strom's statement about staying in your lanes. I remember when my kids were little and they played soccer, and if you remember, you know, five or six or seven-year-olds, it's punchball. And everybody goes to the ball, and it's this group of people like this. But as they get older and they learn the game, and, and then they stay in their lanes, they, they stay where they're supposed to be, and, and they become more effective. And so, you know, in high school, it got, you know, better quality, and, and they did better at that. And if you, you know, watch The Sounders, they really, you know, do well most of the time. And so it's, and it's learning that about ourselves, you know, that we want to be a group that plays punchball and, you know, get in each other's way, or we want to be a group that really, you know, plays like we're supposed to play, and stay in our respective lanes, and stay in our positions, and trust that, that, that position's going to get covered by that person. I just need to be responsible for my position and making sure that I do my role at the best of my ability and move forward accordingly.
Thank you. Scott?
I think my interest is finding ways to communicate so that we achieve understanding. I think Carrie mentioned understanding. I think the communication is good, but I think it's a tool that we use to try and arrive at understanding. And I don't think understanding means that we always agree about everything, but I think it means that when there are differences of opinion, we can recognize those and respect those and still be friends. We don't need to get, need to get angry or resentful because we may disagree about something. We can do it in a friendly, amicable way.
Thank you, Ken.
I hope this process results in the city council being able to more easily ascertain common policy goals.
So that's my big thing. I think much more time needs to be spent on larger issues, larger goals, common interests. Otherwise, it's too easy to fall into issue-specific battles. And if you have a lot more discussion and agreement on the big issues, it'll be that much easier to deal with the small things.
Dave?
I'm going to put on my psychology hat. I believe out of this, hopefully, we will get improved interpersonal communication and respect between the mayor and the council, between each of us as council members, and between the council members and the directors and staff.
All right. My interest in this process is to improve our effectiveness on this city council. And I have a special interest in increasing our efficiency and predictability of city council meetings.
Adrian?
I'm interested in seeing improved professional behavior and trust that has been lost over the last two years. I'll leave it at that.
Al?
So I'm going to try and sum up. This word's been on my mind since I spoke last, listening to all the comments around the table. The one word is teamwork, and I really think that's been lacking on a variety of levels. I've always viewed the city council as the board of directors of the municipal corporation, the mayor as the CEO, and we have our respective department heads, council sets the policy, and we operate the departments. And that can be done with teamwork in mind, as, as teamwork is, is our mantra. And that just has not been very evident for several years now. So that's, that is the one outcome. I would really appreciate it.
Laura?
As I mentioned when we spoke, I would like you to get the cotton out of everybody's ears so that these other things can be achieved. When our listening skills are better, then our understanding increases. When our listening skills are better, our team building and ability to function as a team increases. And when we don't listen to each other, or we don't even make the effort to listen to each other, then we get what we have.
Thank you. And Joan?
I'm benefiting from being the last one, as Scott was. And all of these goals, I think, are really good goals. And what I see, the definitions are really important to me. Scott Passy had a bunch of definitions in his introductory statement about values. I would, I, I think what's really important is that we define, the roles of all the staff members are defined in their job descriptions. What isn't clear, I don't think, are the roles of council members and the role of the mayor as administrator of the city. So I would like to define, I want to get out of this process clear definitions of what council members' responsibilities are and what the mayor's responsibility is, legislative responsibility, administrative responsibility. And then the other thing in terms of definitions, I've heard economic development be brought up, and I've heard that for years. I'd like to define, I'd like the elected officials and staff members together, or just the elected officials, to define what do we mean by economic development. And I would like us to define what we mean by progress.
So we only have a couple of minutes left, but this, I'm meeting this agenda has been so structured, and I really appreciate that you came with such a great level of preparation. I just want to open it up for a few minutes, and we have like about five to go. Any impressions of today? Anything that was most meaningful to any of you? Phil?
I really enjoyed the first exercise where we got to know each other a little better. I mean, I learned so much about so many people here that I didn't know. And I've been here almost four years. You'd think those things would have popped out at some point. But to me, when I understand somebody's background and the focus in their professional life up to the point when I met them, yeah, tells me a lot about what to expect and, and what language they speak. And, and, you know, that was really useful. It'd be, it'd be really nice to capture that. I was just thinking, it'd be really nice to capture that information to have. Maybe we could all just sit down and write a bio of ourselves. I would find that fascinating, be able to remind myself once in a while what your background is so that I really understand some of what you're saying to me and where that's coming from. I found that useful, really useful.
Carrie?
Yeah, it, I guess I didn't, I kind of expected this, and it, and it came true. But we often, I mean, we all are rolling up our sleeves, and we're working on very similar goals, and we have very similar values and very similar interests. And there's a lot of connection between what we all share today individually. And I think it's a good framework with which to, to jump from.
Anybody else?
I would just add, I think one of the issues of the last, oh, I don't know, half-dozen years or more, is there seems to be more focus on differences than commonalities. And I would much rather focus on commonalities.
Yeah, I always knew that Rob was a great player, but now that I know he's from Connecticut. What can I say?
Christiane?
I'd like to thank Jim for guiding us through this first workshop. And I think everyone has been positive and forward-thinking, and I appreciate that. I would like to remind that, that we get out our next set of dates, because I've only heard from Joan so far myself on the dates.
Are we there yet? Because I thought that was the next item. What are the next steps in our process?
Well, let me just, yeah, I'm going to bring that up real quick. Anybody else just want to say anything about what you're taking away from today?
It's not taking it away from today, but I have to take my executive assistant to lunch. This is the day on her, and that's, so I need to make sure we quit at 11:30.
Yeah, we're going to. My watch is, it's 11:20 and a half. We are going to quit at 11:30, I promise you. So let's just go there for a moment. I think I said this in an email, at least to council members. One of the themes I heard about during the interviews of everybody was, again, this idea of there being three teams currently represented at this table. My thought was that the next workshop should be just the seven of you on the council. And I sent an email suggesting that we try to do that by March 16th. And, I mean, sorry, May 16th. And that if there were, if it was possible, then the very next week to bring you all back together as this full group. And as Diane said, we've heard back from a couple council members about dates that they're available, but I don't know if we can do that now. But I'm kind of trying to make that urgent plea that we schedule these, because I know how busy you are, but I want to keep this momentum going too. So Joan?
Yeah, I, I, I'm just really aware that, you know, everything we've talked about in terms of defining roles and responsibilities and, and Mayor Erling defined, but that's one of the things he wants to. I, I really don't see the point of council meeting separately without the other elected official, who is a, a very important part of this, involved in defining roles and responsibilities. And I'd also like Jeff Tardy to be at that meeting because of his role as the- And I'd also like Jeff Tarrady to be at that meeting because of his role as the attorney for the municipal corporation. So that would be my request minimally, that Mayor Erling be involved. But I'd really like to have Mr. Tarrady involved too, because I feel that he is the attorney for, his group is the attorney for the municipal corporation. And this is about our political process and our work together.
You know, actually, I made a little bit of an oversight. From some of the things that I've been talking to various of you about, even during the interviews, I kind of assumed that Jeff would be at all meetings, so even if it's the council.
Okay, great.
So not to speak for you for a moment.
Because I just don't see a reason for the council to meet without the mayor, who's also an elected official.
I respectfully disagree. I think that we need to improve our relationship as a council, as a team. And I see that as one of the three dynamics. The other being all of us together and then council making a relationship that's separate. But I would like us to meet just with the council.
Just because there is so little time and Dave needs to go. You know, actually, I will say that as I was thinking about this a little bit more, I did think of a scenario where maybe there is the next workshop, and it's two hours of just the council and an hour like where if Dave, this worked for your calendar, if we could bring Dave in, even in the second workshop, but give you a little time first and then bring in the other elected official. So maybe we could just leave it at that for a minute. We could think a little bit about a hybrid, how to, again, achieve all interests. But, so I really respect the different positions and different ideas. And I think maybe that would be one way to balance that. But my plea today is I'd love to get, to keep this momentum going. And one way to do it is I will send you the notes, and I'll send you the summary of this in a very short time, like in the next two to three days. And if you had some of the eloquent things that you spoke in writing and you want to send them to me, I'll make sure to get that into this summary. But I'd love to get these meetings.
Just a clarifying question. On the next episode, whatever structure it takes, is are we talking about three hours again? Or are we talking about all day?
No, I want to kind of keep these a little bit shorter, because I think they can grow in intensity. So like three hours is what I'm kind of thinking of, yeah.
So morning or an afternoon, depending on the perspective.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll be able to respond later on.
Okay. Let me send that out again a little bit clearer. So anyway, with that, I just again want to compliment you all. Thank you for taking the time to come so well-prepared and to be so articulate.
If you, council, if you have a chance.